Good evening. Welcome to the Monroe Planning Commission regular meeting for Monday, September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. It's seven P M. And we'll call the meeting to order. Ask candidates to take a roll, please.
Right. Commissioners present and establishing a forum. Commissioners Blair, Paul Dawkins, Lockhart, Low Nugent, and Petrino.
Okay, thank you all for being here. Public comments. This is a time for people to speak to the planning commission in person on issues related to the city of Monroe. Accept those issues subject to a public hearing. When invited to speak, please approach the podium, state your name and association with the city or area or area of residence. The timer will then be started. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. So it looks like we don't have anyone in person. I think that was last meeting because the venue was so small.
I know.
Some of the speakers weren't able to hear my spiel about three minutes, so I apologize for that. Next item of business is our minutes from last week. September sixteenth. Commissioners get a chance to review and have any edits or comments? Or approval? Kelsey?
To approve the minute.
Thank you. Thanks, Carolyn. Commissioners in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Great. Yes. Thank you. Okay. We have Kate with an item of old business. So this is the Monroe two thousand and forty-four comprehensive plans, chapters four, seven, and eight.
Thank you. And just really quickly, just want to make sure everyone can hear us online. Good? Yes, perfect. Thank you. Okay. All right. I also have Jacob Roberts is joining us online this evening in case you have technical questions for Public Works. This evening again, our chapter, go to the next slide, our chapters are transportation, parks, recreation, open space trails, and then the appendices, and then the capital facilities chapter. Next Monday is your scheduled public hearing. The notices, postcards went out to every property owner within the Monroe urban, oh, good, you got one. Urban growth area. It's online. So hopefully we'll get people to comment. These are the last chapters that we have not had a second round of review. The transportation chapter is a summary of the entire transportation plan, which is an appendice in the comprehensive plan. The big items again, this plan transitions from a intersection level of service to a corridor, which Jacob and his team have been here a couple of times talking about the modeling for that. The other really important piece of this is now we're moving to a multimodal level of service standard. So it's no longer just vehicle flow. We're also looking at completing sidewalks, bike lanes, and trails that will help us also comply with new state requirements that are addressing climate change as well as active transportation and encouraging people to be more physically active. So this one change is going to help us achieve several or work towards achieving several goals in the Growth Management Act. So just walking through the chapter, it's set up the same as the all of the others. You have a brief introduction to what it is, what the growth management requires. It goes into relationships with other plan developments. In this one, it does include a handful of the maps. It talks about the different classifications for our road network. This is not changing, and this is the same as the two thousand and fifteen plan. The state pretty much establishes hierarchy. The next page talks about flows. Our next map is talking about vehicle flows and volumes. The next page begins to introduce you to that level of service standards I just mentioned. And then we walk through existing conditions. And then the new, I think, exciting stuff, honestly, in my opinion, is when we're getting to the active transportation. So it's starting to show you this network that we're trying to complete, how it is today, and the areas that we need to build upon in the future. The other thing with this is that we can modify our impact fees because this is now part of our transportation network. That would be a side project from the comprehensive plan, but it sets us up to do to do that in the future. The rest of it is really going over things that have been in the plans historically. Transportation demand management. There is also the inventory of our different services. It includes First Airfield, which is a generally owned general aviation facility, the freight network, which is way beyond what the city allows for truck routes in the city of Monroe. And it also talks about the rail line that goes through the city. On page four dash six, and I again have not figured out how to get all of the numbering on the pages. So I apologize if you're following along in the transportation chapter. On page four point two, it talks about the big picture projects, two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and forty-four. And at this high level, it's really been grouped together by categories. So we have intersection improvements, the bike lane, multipurpose paths, sidewalk projects, and then a general maintenance and operation. So this is the big picture. And then as the transportation improvement plan gets updated on an annual basis, it will tie back to one of these particular categories. The transportation improvement plan is something we are actually required to adopt by July first of every year. It is a six-year physically constrained plan that shows the projects that we're going to do and how we're going to fund them. And Jacob, feel free to hop in if I am saying something that's not correct.
You're doing great so far. Thank you.
All right. And then finally, the goals and policies and like the last two weeks, really, that's where I'd really like you to take a look. Is this consistent with what we've been discussing? Is this what you're hoping to see for us to achieve a really robust transportation network for the city of Monroe? And then can you bring out the transportation plan itself? And then I'm gonna have Hannah bring up the the appendices that you had access to in the share link file. And again, the transportation plan was developed in conjunction with the land use plan. They have to work together. And so the modeling is based on that future twenty-year plan. Okay. Just really kind of want to walk through it. That's a pretty picture. Actually, do you guys want to walk through this or it's not that important to you? Yes, or are there specific questions? Maybe go that route?
Yes, just questions. For me. Sorry, Kelsey. I jumped in on you.
Fine. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I had one question on page nineteen or four, seven. It says within Monroe, both S R five twenty-two and U S two are considered urban highways of statewide significance and have an LOS standard of D. Does that mean like it has to be a D or we have to change it or that it is D?
It can deteriorate to a level D. That's the lowest standard that the state. But the big caveat, though, is that if it deteriorates further than that, the city of Monroe does not have the authority to make changes because it is a state highway. But that is the established level that the state has created. Jacob, you want to add to that?
Well, I was just wondering if that meant that it is at D or that it can deteriorate to D. So that's that answered that question. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Well, again, if you're if you're seeing, if you have questions that come up, if you see typos, if the goals and policies are not what we've been talking about, you have questions about them, please send me comments. Oh, Kelsey again.
Kelsey's.
You're muted.
Okay, on some of these action items, there just isn't any action items.
So that is correct.
Is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So each chapter is a little bit different. Some of them have identified actions. Some of them just have goals and policies. So if you see something that you're like, oh, wait a minute, I think we could actually have an action. I would love your feedback. All right. Well, then I'll hop onto the next topic. I just realized I don't have Ben on the line this evening, but if you have questions for him, we can definitely get back to him. On the Parks Recreation and Open Space, that plan was adopted in two thousand and twenty-two. The that portion of the plan is not changing or the goals and policies. Thank you. Sorry. The piece that is changing is we're now incorporating the Trails Master Plan. And so on page what is that? Page seven point seven dash six. In the Trails or the Parks Plan, it now includes that map directly out of the Trails Master Plan, which will be adopted by reference and incorporated in the chapter, but it will be in appendices. Ben explained to me that in two years, they'll have to update the PROS Plan. And so they'll better integrate the Trails Plan into the Parks Recreation and Open Space. But from a comprehensive plan, we have it covered. And there's there's nothing new in this chapter since we reviewed it last. Goals and policies, again, this one's a little bit different because they were already adopted. It's just taking what was done in twenty-two and incorporated in this one. So it's a little bit different than the other chapters. It has a little bit less flexibility.
Yes, since it was adopted in years ago, in two thousand and twenty-two, so this now goes into the two thousand and forty-four by plan. Yeah, because obviously in two thousand and twenty-two, it wasn't going to two thousand and forty-four, right?
Yeah, so the the recreation, I really wish I had been here. There is a different state agency that they have to do comprehensive planning under in order to be eligible for funding. It's on a different cycle than the comprehensive plan. And so it's this, it's a little bit off from when we do the comprehensive planning. But when we want to go out for state or competitive grants, you have to prove that it's first in your comp plan and then in the gosh, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of the other organization. So it has to be in both of them in order to be eligible. And so that's why it's the timing is a little different.
So it's PROS every four years or six?
It's every five.
Five.
Should be every five. Yeah. And so you're going to have a little bit disconnect. Jacob is, oh, yeah.
I'm not Ben Swanson, but I have the same haircut. I believe what you're looking for, Kate, is the Recreation and Conservation R C O Grants. And it's a seven-year cycle for that, as far as I know.
Okay, thank you. So back to the Trails Master Plan. So this was also drafted in conjunction with the transportation plan. There's a little bit of overlap with transportation, and there's a little bit of overlap in the Parks Plan. And so when you're reviewing the Trails Master Plan, which is new, just keep that in mind. You're going to see little pieces in the transportation. It's it's a standalone document right now, but it's you can also see pieces that pieces of it in two other chapters. Ben did say that the Parks Board will be finishing the review and providing the Planning Commission a formal recommendation. I think it's the first part of October. So that will be part of your record as we're moving forward. And I know there's a lot of excitement around the Trails Plan. Are there any specific questions? All right, this might be a really quick evening. Nice, because our last day were long. All right, moving on to capital facilities. And in my opinion, this is actually like the second most important after land use because this is proving that we have water, sewer, storm. Storm is a little bit different. We have new regulations to comply with. But we have to prove that we have water and sewer available for development. And that it's the funding, if the funding falls short, we have to reassess our land use chapter. So it's really important. I really appreciated John Landy explaining that the question keeps coming up. Do we have capacity at the treatment plant? We have capacity there, but the issue is the transmission lines to get it there and some of the pump stations. So that update information is included in the actual master plans that are in the appendices. But I want to walk through the plan first really quickly. What's important in the capital facilities plan like transportation is we have to have a multi-year financing plan. And that's called the Capital Improvement Plan. That gets updated with the budget cycle. It takes that twenty-year plan and it breaks it down. We do it on a six-year basis. The interesting thing about capital facilities is we don't own everything. So the school district is its own entity. They make the determination of what facilities are necessary. We provide them with our projected population. They work backwards on what they need to provide school facilities. The other one, the fire district, where we were housed here in the office or in the building. They are their own public entity. We rely on them for service. And so we won't, in this plan, we're not including their capital facility plans as appendices. Instead, we're just referencing, we're referencing them. So on page eight dash three, it has a breakout of utility and other providers. And then on the right-hand side, it also talks about the different water districts that are in Monroe's urban growth area. Talks about the Snow Isle Library and then the Public Hospital District, which is currently managed by Evergreen Health. So all of those, oh, I see a question. All of those entities are their, they are public entities that we acknowledge and we want to be consistent with, but we do not control.
Melanie?
This is actually a comment that's relevant right now that I figured I'd insert here instead of at the end. But when speaking about the school district facilities, the school district is actually actually taking applications right now for a twenty-member facility advisory committee. The only real requirement is that you live within the Monroe School District boundaries. So in order to make improvements, they have to have like a voter-approved bonds to do a lot of the stuff that they do. But for anybody, whether in here or active in the community who's watching, I just figured I'd make that a point is that it's another opportunity to be involved in what's happening in terms of facilities specifically pertaining to the Monroe School District. So you can find that information on their website to apply, and applications are due by September thirtieth.
Thanks, Melanie.
Yeah, appreciate that. We, so both the Monroe and the Snohomish School Districts, Monroe is within both those districts. And so they both just updated their capital facility plans, which will be incorporated by reference and actually in the appendices because we collect school impact fees on their behalf, which is a little bit different for the other special purpose districts. We do not collect fees for them because we do for school districts. We are required to include that in the comp plan. So also another little difference there. So I'm not going to have Hannah bring up the utility plans, but I just, and I'm kind of going to look to Jacob a little bit. They have, in addition to us preparing this for the comp plan, they have their own regulatory reviews by is it Department of Health, Department of Ecology in Snohomish County?
Yes.
Yes, it could give me learning. So those draft plans will remain in the Big Picture Monroe two thousand and twenty, two thousand and forty-four plan. But we will, we already know we're going to be making an update next year to account for the actual adoption by those different agencies. They might have different comments that we're getting from state agencies right now. So on September twelfth, everything was submitted to the Department of Commerce, and they're the coordinators for all state agencies. So all the draft plan chapters, appendices were sent to them for the required sixty-day review. That's a different timeline for these very specific utility plans. So we'll get comments back from Commerce. Can't remember the timeline for like the water that could take through quarter one of two thousand and twenty-five. So again, we know it's coming and we will be updating the comprehensive plan. We'll get the final approvals. Any questions yet?
Okay. Okay, so since we have this due by the end of the year, we can still make changes after, obviously, we don't have some stuff out of our hurry to get.
So utility plans are a little bit different than the rest of the comp plan. The comp plan really needs to be adopted by the end of two thousand and twenty-four. And technically, all of our development regulations to implement also need to be adopted. Reality is we are not going to get there. My goal is to get us like the the city, what we'll do a citywide rezone. So the zoning code is now consistent with the new future land use map that we've been looking at. That will happen, I'm hoping, in January or February, so it's not too far behind, but I have capacity issues.
Do we still submit this year?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
We still submit it and everything.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. And and like I just stated, the state agencies. So the way that works is Commerce will will send everything to the state agencies, but we have a whole list of other regulatory agencies and the tribes. So I sent that email out on the thirteenth. So they still have, they have sixty days as well. And it was put on our website and the the postcard that you received. So we're telling everybody, hey, this plan's coming on. The council is scheduled to take final action on December twelfth, if I remember correctly. It's in the slide. So that you can go beyond. The concern is that if you go beyond, you can be challenged to the growth hearings board for not having a up-to-date plan. And I I'm confident we're going to get there. Yeah. Okay, so back to capital facilities. There's a map in here that kind of shows the highlights. Then table eight point two talks about the different facilities, essential public facilities. So this is, these are things that are very hard to cite for one reason or another. They are given special consideration in our zoning code. Essential public facilities require a conditional use permit. Here's the list that we have identified, not only in the comp plan, but also in the code. The next couple of pages just show you where our water sewer systems are, school districts. And then concurrency is another concept, which I hope I introduced you to already, since this is like the second round. Concurrent concurrency is this concept that if you do not have the infrastructure and you're given this grace period of seven years. And so you could pay into it until you get it constructed. And so impact fees is one of those tools to help us get infrastructure. And so this section beginning on eight dash two, it talks a little bit about concurrency. That also, for example, in the transportation plan, is our level of service standard. We need to make sure that its development is happening. The level of service we had set does not go below what has been adopted by the city, and that review process is called concurrency. And and then this talks about the different financing options. And then again, goals and policies. It sounds like a reporter here. Please review. If you have questions, comments, or if you think we've missed something, please let me know. And then again, the appendices have the water, sewer, storm water. The capital facilities plan also has to include reference to the Parks Plan, which is kind of unique. So in the Capital Improvement Plan, that financing piece, it actually includes the park piece of it with the other water, sewer, storm, transportation, and municipal buildings. One piece that is still being developed, which you will have next week, is there is a piece on the municipal campus updates. For the most part, City Hall is now in progress to being complete. But the phase three, if you remember, there was like a three phases for the campus. That final phase is the police department. So there's a little bit more information about their need study as well as the big picture cost of what that will be. And again, it needs to be in the comprehensive plan. If we go out for grants through the state or whatever we can find, we have to prove that we thought about this and that it's necessary to serve our growing population. So that will be part of your packet, and I would encourage you to look at that. It will be appendix eight B, I think. I'll make sure that Hannah Hannah and I will coordinate, so we'll draw your attention to that new piece of information. All right. Questions? Comments? All right, we're getting to the we're getting there. So again, the public hearing is scheduled for next week. I'm gonna instead of waiting for the discussion, I do need to let you know, I've been working with our city attorney on Friday. We reviewed the entire document, just making sure that we're checking all about the boxes for the Growth Management Act. One piece that not sure about timing, we may need to hold the record open to October seventh. So could all of you please look at your calendar? That is the first Monday in October. If you're available, we may need to hold a special hearing to continue the public hearing. So if you could look at your calendars and get back to Hannah, maybe by the end of this week. We would actually tomorrow, because if we need to post notice, we need to get that in the paper soon, soon. I'm hoping for all this extra work that we're doing, that it's not going to be needed, but I need to just have a fallback.
Randy?
Hi. Can I just notify you now so I don't forget? I I'm not available October seventh. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Liz?
I was gonna ask the same. I am available if need be.
Okay.
Melanie?
I am available.
Thank you very much. Carla?
I'm available.
Awesome. Kelsey?
I'm available as well.
Thank you. And Bob?
I don't want to ruin the momentum. I am available.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to use my umbrella theory and have Hannah go ahead and put the notice in the paper as a fallback. We can always cancel it. I'm just concerned that if I don't get the information necessary and don't have it scheduled, we'll need it. Thank you very much. Looks like Kelsey had a question. No, okay.
Carla?
I'm sorry. So that special hearing would be suited to what?
It would be a continuation of the public hearing for the comprehensive plan. There, yeah, there are a few things that I am working with our consultant team on to it's some cross-referencing that really is necessary. And I don't know how quickly they can turn around the edits that we provided in the last week and today. And so if it's not done, I need to be able to give you both a verbal update during the public hearing as well as provide the public as and the planning commission the opportunity to comment. And so the safest way to do that is keep the public hearing open. My fingers are crossed that everything gets completed, but just in case, I wanted to make sure we had availability and forum.
Well, we aren't, it's only quiet, right?
We are not. We are not. And that's, again, this is my umbrella theory. If I have it ready, I hopefully won't need it. And that's, again, this is my umbrella theory. If I have it ready, I hopefully won't need it. Okay, that is all I have for you.
Did we thank Jacob?
Yes, thank you, Jacob.
Should we also let him know we probably don't need him on the double?
Yeah, he will not.
Because he didn't chime in.
Yeah, yeah, Jacob, you're not needed on the seventh. Don't worry about it. Public hearing, we're good.
Thanks for being our subject matter expert, Jacob.
It feels great to not be needed. Thank you.
Until I call him tomorrow. Wait. Whatever.
Thanks, Jacob.
Lance, did you have anything you wanted to say? We're good. Okay. All right. So we
Ready for?
Warp speed, ready for next week.
Good.
My novel is close to being finished for you.
Yeah, I'm enjoying it. You got it all three hole punched. So move on to discussion by commissioners and staff. We'll start with our online folks, Brandy.
Hi, I don't have anything tonight. I'll probably start coughing if I talk too long. So I'm I'm good. I'll see you guys healthy next week.
Yes, thank you. Get well. Liz?
I'm unfortunately in the same boat as Brandy. But just appreciate everybody's work for tonight's meeting. And so thank you, staff and everybody contributing.
Thanks, Liz. Bob, it can't be transmitted through Zoom. You're good.
But it's a high-speed connection? No, I I think there, I see light at the end of the tunnel. Or is it an oncoming train? I'm not sure. But we'll have our umbrellas ready. We're ready to go. Good job.
Thank you. Kelsey?
Oh, yeah. I just want to say thank you, staff. It's looking awesome. I feel like it's really easy to read and it's really pretty. So I'm just getting really excited about it. So thank you.
Thanks, Kelsey. Kate wants to thank you for your edits as well. Lance?
I can, if I can unmute, I'm kind of in the down mode as well. Don't know what's going on, but I don't have anything to add tonight. Man, yes, we're getting to the finish line, which is fantastic.
I appreciate you being here, Lance. Get well. Melanie?
I find it unironic that it's mostly all the parents that are sick right now because it's that back-to-school cred. So I stayed home today to avoid spreading it myself. But also just want to say thank you, staff. I think the quickness of tonight's meeting is a testament to how much work has been done on this and just how awesome our comprehensive plan is turning out to be. And then a final comment on that, I, how quickly will, after approval of the city and everything, will we be able to get our hands on that beautiful gigantic binder like the last one? Because I want one or something similar if it's going to be presented different. But thank you. And that's all for me tonight, too.
I guess that's a really good question that you bring up, Melanie, because we had not planned on doing hardbound copies. But if that is desired by the commission, please let us know. I know I've got at least one council member who has requested one. So if you need it and you want it, let me know.
So there's some special funding that needs to be requisitioned or anything?
No.
No, okay.
It's just a matter of getting them printed and binders.
Carla?
That was actually one of the questions I was gonna have, anything I, Melanie was gonna ask. But I, yeah, I definitely would be interested.
Okay.
I think it would be, you know, good to be able to look back and reference items and, you know, I think everything has been going very well. I know I watched last week's meeting and a lot of discussion, which I think is good. But as time goes by, you forget little things, music gets better. So it's great to be able to do that. And I do have a printer, but I don't know if it would handle all that. So, yeah, thank you. It is neat to get, you know, being, getting close to being the end product and all the work and breathing in. So thank you.
Yeah.
Bobby, you had a thought?
Yeah, I second the motion for getting written documentation. I I'm an old guy. I love my written documentation. It's easier, well, I don't know why, but it seems easier for me to go to the document and find what I need, even though I am able to use the internet and things like that.
Just, I would, I want to be clear what everyone's requesting. Are you requesting hard copies of the draft documents now or are you?
Final documents, final documents.
Okay, after post-adoption. Ordinance number and the beautiful bound. I just wanted to be sure. I didn't want anyone hanging.
And I'll rent a U-Haul and bring it down to City Hall to get my copy.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to thank staff. Very welcome. Appreciate it. Appreciate everything you guys are doing to put this together. And I want, especially want to thank the planning commissioners tonight, full commission tonight and your willingness to to meet on the special meeting dates to make sure we get this thing wrapped up before the tenth of December, the final city council meeting. So, thank you. Kate?
I second that. Thank you so much for all of your review and your comments. And you know, at the end of the day, it's the city's document. And so having your input and feedback and questions is greatly appreciated. So thank you and the extra meetings this month and potential for that first meeting in October. Other than that, I don't have anything more. Thank you for letting me know. We'll have a forum if needed on October seventh.
Hannah?
I don't have anything besides everyone at home is really missing out because the fire station has new tables and chairs. So you'll have to see him next week at the public hearing. That's all I have.
Very nice.
It's swanky. Yeah, so.
Sure.
I move to adjourn our meeting tonight at seven thirty.
Do I have a second? Melanie?
I second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Again, thanks all for being here. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
And get well soon. Everyone.
Thank you, vitamins.